Okay, good evening. It is four thirty-two. This is a meeting of the Transportation Subcommittee. It is being held in the City Council Chambers as well as we have participating by Zoom. So with that, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Elliott?
Here.
Counselor Conway, Counselor Samaras to present.
Thank you. So we wanted to call this Transportation Subcommittee and a couple of items, and I don't expect we'll get through all of them this evening. However, we thought it was good to call this meeting. Myself, Counselor Samaras, Counselor Conway had a doctor's appointment, so we regret that he's not able to join us. But we will be recessing this meeting to a later time to continue the discussion, certainly about updating the numerous projects that's going on in the city. I know Christine Clancy is joining us via Zoom, as well as Craig Thomas from Planning Development, Director. Christine McCall, as well as the Parking Director Terry Ryan. So thank you for joining us. I know it's a hot day. And what better subject to talk about on a hot day than transportation? So with that, to my fellow colleague, Counselor Samaras, any questions, thoughts, observations before we begin?
No, we're all set.
Okay.
Nice warm day to be here, so it's comfortable.
And we do have a number of participants that have also joined us, so welcome. So with that, I'd like to go, what's that? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Mercier is here and Counselor Nune, please forgive me. So with that, any thoughts, comments from Counselor Nune, Counselor Mercier, before we begin?
I'd like to transport myself from this food into someplace next to the pool.
To the pool, okay. Somewhere cool and maybe a pool. Okay, good. So with that, why don't we go to why don't we go right to Christine Clancy, if that's okay, and then we're going to go right to the parking study, because I think that's that's important. But Christine, I know at the last City Council meeting, you gave a brief update of a synopsis of numerous projects going on, both bridges, road construction, municipal buildings. So I don't know if you want to run through, I mean, I did ask for a brief overview of the Lord Underpass/Overpass project that is ahead of schedule, but anything else you'd like to bring to our attention from that update? It's all significant, but of sort of higher priority?
Sure. I mean, there, so there was an update provided to the council on June twenty-second, informational update, providing an update on all the construction projects we have going around the city, including our projects and projects by Mass DOT. These, this information is also provided on the city's website, so I ask you if they want to have some information readily available. It's all, it's all online, too. So I think that's a good resource if people have, want to look up particular projects. I can maybe provide an overview. I think the two that we really talked about at last council's meeting was Lord Overpass and then the Central Street Bridge. And I can provide those updates, and then if there's any other projects, I can provide that as well. So Lord Overpass project is going relatively well. It's slightly ahead of schedule. So at this time, the two existing bridges have been decommissioned and all surfaces have been constructed to its final alignment. The next traffic pattern, which is stage four or five, will be implemented this September, and that does include allowing traveling through on Middlesex Street. So phase four, that will commence this September and really continue into next year, and that's really the streetscape phase, where we'll be putting in, you know, curbing, sidewalk, traffic signals, all those the really the surface finishes. And then the last phase is stage five, and that will include the bus lane down the center, and that will end the completion of the project, which is anticipated to be November of 2022. I don't know if there's any questions about Lord Overpass?
Nope, I think, I think the update was really what we're just trying to get to. So that's, is it fair to say that it'll be substantially complete? Mostly through phase five? Does that make, I mean, I know the bus lane is a significant addition, but?
Sure, yeah. And I don't have right in front of me the date of when phase five begins. I believe it's sometime next summer. I can, we can provide that information on our website. But yes, I would say that, I mean, this is, stage four is the, is a large phase. I would say that the most impactful phase in terms of traffic is the current phase, phase three. That's where we have the closure at Middlesex Street. So, you know, once we get past through, through this phase, stage four is not as severe as what we've been experiencing, and then stage five is, is less severe than what we've been experiencing. But I will say, I mean, the pandemic with the reduction in traffic, I think this project has gone very smoothly. And we are, like I said, we're tracking slightly ahead of schedule. And then the other project is the, it's part of the Tiger Program, and that's a reconstruction of five bridges in the city of Lowell. And that includes Merrimack Street over Merrimack Canal, Merrimack over Western, Pawtucket Street over Northern Canal, and Pawtucket over Pawtucket Canal. And then lastly, Central Street over Pawtucket Canal. All bridges are nearing completion, with the exception of the Central Street over Pawtucket Canal. That's really the last of the bridges that we have to complete. And we did announce to the council and to the, and through, through notices in the city that in this February, that we were going to do a resequencing plan of the Central Street Bridge. And this would allow for acceleration of construction, going from a three-phase construction down to two phases. So that, we implemented that, that phase in February, this, just this past February. Traffic was reduced to one way in a northbound direction, and southbound is being detoured appropriately around the downtown area, down Merrimack Street and Church Street. So the, and also that's been coordinated with emergency services. So we began that work in March, and upon beginning that construction and removing the deck material, we found additional deterioration of beam members. So we really took a pause at that point to look at the existing design in place and see if there's additional design measure or construction needed. And so we are going through and doing additional beam replacement. The original project proposed partial beam replacement, and now we are focusing on entire beam replacement. And so we are right now going through that design effort. We're hopeful that the contractor will remobilize in this July. And we will continue to provide updates to the community as we receive them. I think one important thing to note here is that this project originally was going to extend the bridge by ten to twenty years. So we would probably be back at this bridge in ten to twenty years doing additional repairs. Now that we are doing full beam replacement, we really are extending that, the useful life of the bridge by about forty to fifty years. So that is the silver lining in this finding. I don't know if there's any questions about that project?
No, I don't think so. Any questions?
Well, there are many other projects, I would say, and I, you know, ask that people look on their website if they have any questions. And we will continue to provide updates through this summer. I mean, we're in the busy construction season, so we will continue to provide updates. If not monthly, at least every other month, or as needed.
Great, thank you. Just, I just have two questions on projects that may not be on there. The Rourke Bridge, any, any update, status update that you can give? Has an option been selected, or were we at the design phase?
I do not have that information in front of me. I don't know if Christine McCall might, but we will have an update. There are a number of projects in this design phase that are not in this report. This is focused just on construction updates, but I do know that they're moving, I guess I don't want to speak with, with an update.
That's fine.
But we will, we can get an update.
Yeah, I see Christine doesn't, there's no update. It's, it's just, there's a lot of construction and a lot of activity in that area, so it would be helpful to know. The other part would be an update on the roundabout at, at the Old Ferry Road in Barnum Ave. Naturally, since COVID, post-COVID, traffic has increased significantly, which has impacted that intersection and as well as West Meadow Road. Do we have an update on the status of the appeal at DEP?
I'm not sure if Eric Slagle's on the Zoom, so I can answer for DPD if he's not, which is fine. It was, we don't have an update. It's still, the DEP is still reviewing the latest. And as soon as we have an update, we will obviously update the council, we'll update the neighborhood group, and we'll update the planning board.
Okay.
Yes, I can add to that a little bit. I agree with Christine. There's really no update in terms of the construction. It is with DEP. I know DEP asked for some information regarding the revised design, regarding the erosion control plan. And that was, that information was provided to DEP, so we're hopeful to receive an update soon from DEP.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions for the Director, Commissioner of Public Works, for members of the Subcommittee, members of the City Council? And we also recognize Counselor Chow has joined us as well. So I think that concludes, that was really just kind of, you know, to provide an update. A little bit more of an extension from the previous council meeting, so I, I think we're good at this point. I got kicked out of Zoom, so I hope members of the public are not waiting to, oh, here we go. I'm back in, because I am the host. Are there any members of the public that have joined us that would like to participate? I don't see anybody's hands that are, are up that little signal. So if there is, just just please let me know. Why don't I do this? I'm going to put video. I think we're supposed to let all the video in, correct? Okay, with that, why don't we proceed if there's no objections? Sort of the primary purpose was to have an update on the parking study that has been done. So without further ado, we could go right to Christine McCall. She has a presentation prepared regarding the Lowell Parking Study. Again, as I mentioned, Mr. Ryan, the Parking Director, has joined, joined us, so let's go, let's go right into it.
Thank you, Counselor. We actually have our consultant, Stantec, on the Zoom, who will lead through the presentation. Terry and I have been working with them over the past year and a half to assess, you know, our parking assets in the city. So this is a, we are considering a report of progress. We have a, we received funding to do the study from the state, and that grant is up this week. So we won't have Stantec, but Terry and I, this is the start of a lot of a conversation, so this is not, we're not proposing any votes tonight. This is just, this is what we've heard from neighborhood, the neighborhoods. This is what we are, some suggestions moving forward. And so with that, I'd like to toss it over to Michael and Liza from Stantec.
Great. And by the way, Counselor Mercier, we have a presentation beforehand, right? So thank you for following up. I think it's important for us to have a hard copy as, as we go through the presentation.
Great. We'll try to be speedy, understanding some of the time limitations this evening. Thanks for having us. My name's Michael Clark. I'm with a consulting firm, Scantec. We're based out of Boston. Liza Cohen's also joined us this evening. She is going to help us with a question and answer session at the end of this presentation. We'll try to leave this to about eight to ten minutes tops. We'll go over our study goals and our public outreach efforts and survey results to date. But I think the most interesting thing to go over this evening is our studies findings and draft recommendations before leaving some time for Q and A. So our goals and public outreach, as Christine alluded to, this study is being funded through a Housing Choice Grant from the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development. Some of our purposes and goals of the study are to analyze the existing parking inventory and utilization throughout the city, study parking-related policies and management practices, compare parking supply and demand to existing land uses, especially in downtown, and really to encourage economic development. On the right-hand side here, in the orange boxes, are the goals of the study. These are based off of past plans and ongoing efforts, like Go Lowell, as well as the city's guidance. In the interest of time, I think we can return to those if we'd like. This is our citywide study area. I'll emphasize that our findings and most, most of our findings and all of our recommendations really do concern the city as a whole. But the data collection effort for this study encompassed just the areas in the orange boxes here. This includes all of downtown and many of the outlined neighborhoods from downtown. This is about forty-seven thousand parking spaces that we inventoried and collected utilization data for using aerial imagery from prior to COVID, so this is not representative of COVID conditions. We also studied a few commercial corridors exiting the city on Bridge Street, Middlesex, and Rogers Street. Our stakeholder outreach efforts, we've conducted two community meetings, one in early February and one in late May. We also conducted four virtual neighborhood meetings, which covered the entire city in February. We had a public outreach survey that was open for several months at the end of 2020 and beginning of 2021, as well as conducted key stakeholder meetings with city staff, with the development community, with UMass Lowell, as well as with downtown merchants such as Enterprise. So our studies findings. So our first finding is concerning downtown conditions. So traditionally, in a parking study like this, we'll, we'll study the midday peak on a weekday, which is usually when a downtown is most busy with parking activity. We found that that, this time period, a lot of parking in downtown was pretty well utilized, but in some places it was not as well utilized. So some of the data on the left-hand side here, the early garage, the Downs Garage, the Rio Roy Garage, these are at over eighty percent capacity during the busiest time periods, indicating that it can be difficult to find a space in those garages, and we understand that sometimes those garages can close to non-pass holders. On-street parking is also pretty busy, especially along corridors like Merrimack, Middle, and Market Street. Off-street surface lots, which are really private lots, there's no publicly operated surface lots in downtown. These are only about half-full. And then you have some other parts of downtown, as well as garages like Lower Locks and the new Hamilton Canal Innovation District Garage, at least in the early going year, which have a lot of excess capacity that could fit more vehicles. We also conducted some data counts for overnight parking. And we found that there's a lot of excess capacity for parking in the overnight hours, which is really not that surprising. This is the case in almost every community where parking is being utilized. It's, it's typically in the early garage, the Downs Garage, the Rio Roy Garage, again, with residents. But other garages, as well as really all on-street spaces, and many of these off-street private spaces, have plenty of excess capacity. So these are the types of spaces that we would want to see filled, if, you know, downtown were to accommodate more growth. Parking demand also differs across neighborhoods. This is a map of, at least the part of the study area that we conducted for Centerville. We found that throughout the community and residential neighborhoods and at neighborhood business districts, there's general availability during weekdays. This is a little less so near UMass Lowell, but still observing a lot of availability on residential streets. But during the overnight hours, there's oftentimes a crunch on on-street parking. You can see it on the map on the right-hand side here. This data that's represented in orange effectively means that these spaces are full. And this is also observed in neighborhoods like Lower Velvet Ear, Acre, Lower Highlands, and Pawtucketville as well. Another key finding is that parking price does not reflect demand, so parking pricing in the community today is really a flat one-dollar-and-fifty-cent rate per hour. And this is the case whether you're talking about the downtown area, where you're seeing a lot of demand for those spaces, or maybe west of downtown towards Acre and UMass Lowell, where there's less demand for those spaces. So the pricing is really not responding to the demand that's being observed in the community today. And our last finding concerns the Reserved Parking Sign Program, and just that this program, as it operates today, is rather inefficient. The key finding from this is that the green and white placard signs really end up privatizing what is a public resource, which is on-street parking. When these spaces aren't being used by the permit holder, they go empty, which can be a problem when, you know, that space might want to be filled by another vehicle, another user of that area. This program is also quite difficult to administer and to enforce. Some of the outreach that we've heard from, some of the feedback that we heard from our public outreach processes, we heard that there's an increased need for parking enforcement in residential areas and downtown. Attendees questioned the need for those green and white placard signs. Attendees would have liked to have seen an extension of the two-hour limit for on-street meters, which is the case in most on-street meter spaces today. Meters and kiosks need to be consistently maintained. A lot of them are really showing their age at this point in time. And especially from our survey findings, we found that close to half of residents in Acre, Back Central, and downtown had greater difficulty finding a place to park, especially when they're coming home during evenings. This can be, this can mean that, you know, those residents require, you know, to walk maybe two minutes or more to get from their parking space to their home. So with those findings in mind, I'll, I'll try to shoot through these recommendations somewhat quickly. Our first is to create a shared parking district in downtown. A shared parking district would promote more shared parking, attract new users, increase options for parkers, as well as amenities for customers. Essentially, this recommendation tries to ensure that the city's investments in its parking garages, which today total over six thousand spaces, is not wasted. We also want to make sure that underutilized private parking lots, which as mentioned earlier, about half-full during the busiest time periods, that there are revenue opportunities for the owners of those lots to tap into potential activity. So by creating a shared parking district, we're able to support infill development, so when new development comes to downtown, it doesn't require new parking to be constructed along with it. That in turn reduces development costs. It also allows for an easier discussion when it comes to repurposing on-street spaces for things like outdoor dining, pedestrian space, bike lanes, and transit lanes. Certainly won't get into the mechanics of this slide, but Stantec used what we call the shared parking model to estimate how much development could occur in the downtown area, given the existing parking supply. So today, there's about forty-two hundred empty spaces during the busiest time period in downtown. Understandable land uses that are present in downtown. From a residential perspective, we could accommodate over seven thousand new housing units just in downtown alone. That's nearly triple the number of housing units that are seen today, without adding a single parking space to downtown. Similarly, we could add up to 1.2 million square feet of commercial development to downtown without adding a new parking space tapping into those forty-two hundred empty spaces. This is about seventy, seventy-five percent of the amount of commercial development that's present in downtown today. Our second recommendation is to institute performance-based pricing. So a key part of this is to remove time limits and really use pricing as the mechanism that allows people to determine how long they want to park in a particular location. And pricing is adjusted to respond to demand. This allows drivers to find parking more easily, because you can actually price parking in the downtown area in a way that makes sure that you have about fifteen percent of spaces available at any one time. This helps people prevent cruising around an area, and, you know, when you circle a block several times looking for parking, we can actually use pricing as a way to guarantee availability and ensure a more user-friendly system. So under a performance-based pricing structure, parking is priced differently by location, tailored to the time of day and day of the week, set up to guarantee parking availability. We didn't go into what an actual price for this could look like, but given how parking demand is observed today would likely mean that a lot of meter grades and some rates in garages would probably drop from the dollar-fifty cent per hour that is observed today. Our recommendation is to unlock underutilized parking in neighborhoods. This is in response to the overnight parking crunch that is observed. So a place like Centerville, you have some empty parking lots, whether it's municipal lots or, or lots associated with schools, or as I understand, they had this continued school in this instance. These lots could be opened up for residential use. It could be operated through the residential permit system. They could be used, you know, just for overnight parking at other hours of the day, potentially during snow emergencies. It opens up opportunity for new revenue for these private lot owners. And really helps address that parking crunch. And finally, our last recommendation is to redefine residential parking options. So our intention with this effort is to propose parking permit options which are attractive and make neighborhood parking work better. So this slide here, it shows how reserved parking signs and placards, as well as the residential parking stickers observed in Pawtucketville and Acre work today. With the Reserved Parking Sign and the placard, as you might know, that obligates a space for one vehicle per the household in front of the house. Whereas the parking sticker program, usually in neighborhoods near UMass Lowell, can be used by any vehicle in the household, as well as across the whole, across the whole street. The idea isn't really to move away with these programs entirely and start from scratch. The idea is to really build on how these programs work today and present more attractive permit options. So in some of the materials that we've assembled, we've termed it as master permits and super permits. A master permit is really the evolution of the green and white placard signs. So it still allows for parking in front of your house. It allows for a little more administrative ease in terms of administrative, administering the program by tying these permits to vehicles rather than the residents. Whereas a super permit option is really meant to be compared against the master permit option, grow that sticker program, and allow for more perks. So, you know, instead of getting a master permit, a resident might opt to get a super permit, which allows for parking throughout the city and might allow for additional time at newer spaces, should those be present in the future, or discounting garage parking. From a pricing perspective, as it works to From a pricing perspective, as it works today, these would be less expensive than the master permit idea. I know we don't have that much time to go into these, but the idea is that these are really meant to grow upon the programs that exist today. Revenues from these will be used back in the program administration, transportation improvements in the area, economic development. The idea isn't to take all the funding, all the revenues from these permit options and just keep them. It's really to reinvest them back in the neighborhoods. This includes using pricing to manage visitor parking. So instead of having non-residential users just park for free on residential streets while people pay for permits, there is a pricing mechanism present on the streets that is priced competitively with how much garages cost, with how much daily parking at UMass Lowell costs. And again, the idea is to use revenues from this program to reinvest back in the neighborhoods. So there's really less territoriality around residential parking, as well as making monitoring and maintenance easier. So using ambassadors and municipal staff, scaling back, both police department involvement when it comes to parking matters, using folks into the program with forgiveness and really addressing some of these issues that we observe in residential neighborhoods, such as the picture in the lower center there of sidewalk parking that was a piece of feedback that we heard frequently during our meetings. The idea is to use these to make monitoring and maintenance easier. So these are our recommendations kind of overlaid against the findings on the side. We have another side that just kind of revisits the goals, but I'm actually going to stop there. I know we have limited time for Q and A. But bring it to the floor.
Thanks, Michael. I just wanted to say, Counselor, you know, this is a lot of information and we have so many different, obviously, neighborhood needs. And, you know, what's going to work in Acre versus Patacaville versus downtown are very different. We learned a lot through this study, and so we hope this is the start of a lot of thoughtful conversations to improve quality of life issues in the neighborhoods that relate to parking, but then also to use the study to make impactful economic development changes in our downtown. So again, this is just the start of the conversation. I know this is a lot of information. And so if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer. But this, you know, parking in Lowell, this won't be the last time we talk about it.
No, I think that's a good way to recap the study. This is exactly why we wanted to have this meeting now in July, knowing that this, there's a lot of information, a lot of useful information, recommendations, and on so many different fronts, that it will take time and we will meet on a regular basis at some point. I think it's important to go into the various neighborhoods, to listen to, you know, some of the recommendations that are put forth because what may be applicable in Back Central or Patacaville or some of the highly, more highly congested, may not be a suitable fit. But we do know that parking, and for as long as we have all been here, it is, it's a challenge to provide equity and fairness. And there are some recommendations in here, including in the downtown where, you know, whether it's cost or the allowable time to park. So a lot of time, a lot of opportunity for discussion. So with that, I'll open it up for some discussions. I know this was not going to be enough time. There's not going to be enough time in just one meeting. So I do think Council Smeris and all members of the council, the subcommittee, should go out to the neighborhoods, particularly those, certainly when it comes to the placard parking. That has been a concern of interest for as long as I have been here and Council Mercy and Smeris. So with that, Council Smeris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the things that I think you're aware of regarding parking, what have you, there have been concerns by another constituents as to prices going up regarding, you know, regarding parking. What, I think this is, I mean, you've shown that there's a lot of work has been done in looking at what parking situation is like in Lowell and what potentially what directions we can go in. But as the Chairman Elliott said, it's important that we go out to the neighborhoods and talk to people and tell them. I think people want to know if there's going to be an increase in parking. Why? Do you know what I'm saying? What, you know, what's the value of it? Why is it, why is it increasing in certain areas? That's been the discussion, whether it's true or not, what have you. Do you see major increases or anything like this?
That's a fair question. I think, you know, the city has to balance its investment in building new garages. We want to be able to maintain it long-term. And also, we use pricing as a tool to incentivize turnover. We understand that that's different than folks that are living in the neighborhoods and they don't have a driveway and there's parking on the street. So there is a balance. We didn't get into it with pricing for that reason because I think it's going to be different in every neighborhood. And I will just, I think the, probably the program that people have the most questions about is that master permit, super permit, and the green and white placard system. We're not proposing to change that. We're not proposing to increase the price on that at this time. We're trying to introduce an alternative that gives people more benefits. So if you had the permit and you needed it for parking in your neighborhood, you then maybe could, if you paid a certain, you know, you paid more than the $10 a year for the green and white sign, you could get some benefits in the downtown garages if you wanted to go to dinner with your family one night. We're not proposing any changes to pricing. We do understand, you know, for our residents, you know, we want to be mindful that people, we don't want, we don't want it to be unaffordable. That said, I think we can use pricing to our advantage to make sure there's high turnover, especially in our business districts.
I mean, there's no question about that. One of the things that I like to see, the extension of the two-hour parking, because the thing is, that's been a concern. I did some walking at one time to a lot of the businesses in downtown. That was the common complaint, that some of them have a business that really requires their customers to be there maybe two and a half hours, three hours. You know, not all day. They understand, they don't want the all-day. But at the same time, if they're a hair salon, what have you, they don't want people to not come down. And you can easily say, well, they can go to the garage. But, you know, if there's a parking meter in front of the shop, whether you just go to the meter, walk into the shop as opposed to, you know, a lengthy walk from the downtown. So you've got that. As long as people know why they're paying, what, and you stated well, benefits. What's, you know, okay, you're increasing my rate. Why? How is this going to help me?
We'll take that into consideration. I do think the two-hour is actually, we support it, we like it. I understand the hair salon, personally, I'm there for longer than two hours myself. But I think we want to introduce pricing, so there is high turnover for the front row spots. But we also want to make sure, you know, the garages are safe. There's like, you know, we want to pay for improvements so that people will go into the garage. And that may include some technology improvements. And then again, it's always finding the balance of what's affordable and then making sure that we're properly funding so we can maintain, you know, our systems and our.
Good. I mean, there are no easy answers to that. I mean, because you do something well for somebody else and it impacts other programs. I don't know if I'm talking out of trim, but the thing is, is I remember the governor's announcing a million-dollar grant to the City Law of Parking at the Hamilton Canal either today or tomorrow.
You may have scooped some exciting news that has to do with parking, but not this study. I didn't know that was official, so.
Well, I don't think it has because none of us have heard it, but now we have. But that's good news. But back to the parking study, we do have. I do think, in my opinion, you know, the residential parking option, the placard, yes, I do think it needs to be streamlined. I do feel it's an important element in the neighborhoods because as more people have cars, it becomes, you know, it becomes a battle for people that live there. And they should be able to park in front of their home. So while I will look forward to discussion, I'm glad to hear you say it's not going away because those have been the discussions that we have had for decades, a couple of decades here on, you know, people owning a piece of property, paying their property taxes and be able to park in front of their home versus, you know, multiple renters. I can certainly say with emphasis in the Patacaville neighborhood because of the university. And historically, it's been such a challenge with students. Now, there is a parking garage, which is better, but it's still, the burden is still there. So with that, can we go to Deb Ford-Giome, please? If I'm the moderator, I will, I think you're, I think you're on, Deb.
Okay, I just, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to say one thing because we attended the public meetings, we had a neighborhood meeting, and there is no situation that anybody would be happy or agree to anything that would stop them from parking in front of their house. There wasn't an option in that report or survey that anybody would support not being able to park in front of their house. So you can call it a master plan and a master permit, a super permit, whatever you want. If somebody buys a house and they have a placard now that they can park in front of their house, they don't want to hear anything that's going to take that right away. So I want that to go on the record tonight for this meeting. And I know it's almost over, but it's important that there is no situation that anybody would agree to allowing or supporting any instance that they can't park in front of their house. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And while we have you on the line, if you would like to reach out to me or a member of the subcommittee, we'll set up, we'd like to go out to the neighborhood meeting. I don't know when we can be put on your agenda and Centerville. I think it'd be important to take this study because it's going to take some time to digest and it's going to take some time to hear from residents what they feel is, and I know, and I know there was a survey, but I do think it'll be important to get feedback from each neighborhood organization. So when you're ready, we'll be ready, when the next meeting is, we'll start the roadshow, if you will.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, we have Council Mercy and then Council Noon.
Thank you so much. Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Christine McCall, are we still honoring group rate discounts? We are?
Yes.
All right. Just remember what you said because I have a motion coming in in regards to that. Thank you.
Yes, I think I.
Okay, good. Of Council Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know that this is a study and it's going to be ongoing discussion with the neighborhood group. Also, in the study, it's very interesting to see that downtown has the capacity for more housings and commercial use. So that said, where in downtown can we build this additional housing unit? And the other question is with regard to what effort do we have to put forth in term of attracting new businesses to the empty storefront in downtown?
Two good questions. I have to say, as we go through this study, I was surprised at the number of vacant parking spots at night in our garages. Makes some sense, but also it's a lot of units. I'd like to know the same answer, where those units could possibly be built downtown?
So, you know, the consultants didn't go into specific buildings. They just looked at our assets. And if we manage our assets better, I think this council, especially along a lot of the, the city council has historically always taken very progressive votes. We're a very unique city in that we have a lot of parking public resources. And so they're just acknowledging that if we make some changes, we really can use our assets to make impactful change. So I mean, I can personally tell you some, there's some buildings downtown. And it's not like, you know, we're not talking about 100-unit buildings, but we have some classy office space on the upper floors on our main quarters that maybe if we looked at, you know, would maybe require a change to the zoning or may, you know, to tweak. But there's probably pockets, you know, of up to 20 to 25 units in buildings we probably could accommodate. I think that was just to showcase that we have, we're very unique in that we own a lot of public parking. And then even the private parking, there's a ton available. And if we can figure out a way how to work all together, we can leverage it for positive economic development.
That's good to know. I think it'd be good, and I see Mrs. Legel, I'll get him at the next meeting. But it would be good to know those, you know, those buildings downtown, is it strictly commercial now and does it require an overlay to allow for development, residential development up on the upper floors?
To answer quickly, you know, housing upstairs is allowed, but I believe a special permit is required for more than three units. And I just think because they're historic buildings and they're already expensive to redevelop, it would be worth maybe a conversation to maybe have an overlay for existing buildings, not new construction, to maybe say up to eight units you can do by, that's a number. Don't quote me on it if that's an issue, but that we can get creative, I think, and targeted. So it's not just anywhere. It's where we want to see redevelopment.
Sounds like a motion to me.
Chairman, I may add to it. I do concur with the Director of DPD that is, if we have to change how we, you know, allowed, because it's historical and if they were to do any work there, they probably have to put the elevators and all that. It would cost them a lot of money. And that's why a lot of these owners, they don't want to do anything up there. You know, to do so, it's costing them so much money. So we've got to find a way to help them, you know, because this is going forward, the economic development for that downtown area, that the foot traffic that we've been looking for and that all this business storefront looking for this type of development up there. So thank you.
Great. I think we're concluded here. This was a good, this was a good, will recess this meeting? Anything else, Mr. Ryan? Good to go?
No, appreciate your time.
Okay, great. Thank you, Counselors. Counsel Charlie, also? As I say, Council Smeris, motion to recess by Council Smeris, seconded by myself. All those in favor signify by say an aye, and the opposed, that motion carries. This meeting stands in recess. If I could just ask one thing, Ms. McCall, could we get this presentation out to anybody that's on the neighborhood leaders? Or has it already been sent out to them?
So these slides are exactly the same as the community meeting slides, but I can also send this one to them.
Okay.
And it's also on the website, lolma.gov/parkingstudy. So I can upload this there too.
Okay, I think it'd be good to send it out because it's, to me, getting something in my inbox versus having to go look at the website.
Absolutely.
Is more helpful to me, but I'm glad to also have the hard copy, I have to say. This would be very helpful. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. So Madam Clark, we're a little bit behind schedule. I knew this was going to run a little bit. And we have a COVID memorial dedication or ceremony upfront. So can we go right into the next, can we go right into the next subcommittee? Or maybe we have to get out of Zoom first and then open the meeting again. So Mr., I know Mr. Fernandez has a steady hand at the Zoom, so we will recess this meeting and then open up the Zoom meeting. Thank you very much. This is.